Hello.
Hi.
Welcome. Thank you. Welcome to the CIC. I'm John. 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 Just in case. Just in case. Just in case. Oh, good stuff. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I had some good news on this one.
Oh, yeah. First, he missed. He lost us. He lost us. First, he missed. We're all over it.
Yeah.
What do you think? There you go.
Make sweater or not? She's just starting. I got it. Thanks.
Chris. Hey. Good. Coming with me? Yeah. Nope. Uh, okay. Thanks. Bye. He's on his way. So, in the meantime, um... We'll just start in a few minutes. Seven o'clock now. We're gonna wait for our third member. He's on his way now. Keisha, why the 30th minute?
Because I had the update, the conversation with the conservation community there.
Oh, yeah.
And I sent an email to my pastor last week.
Okay.
And that's...
Great. Okay. Great. Thank you. The, uh... Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, yeah. That one. Wait, you... I, uh... The way from... From the 28th back. I just sat back. Let's reach out. And then we'll spread to you tomorrow.
All right, guys. Great. How's it going? Now, I go from position, uh... I... I'm sorry. 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 My situation, I'm very... I'm sorry. 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 I think he's printing. So, I'm... Computer didn't print. So, I don't have any prints to do that. It's okay.
I have last three minutes, but I'm waiting for the pastor in a certain section. So, do you mind pulling him in until I get the full thing from him? Or do you want to...
Is Mike ready now already?
What's that?
Is Mike ready now already?
I s... He is not ready. I actually sent an email, purpose to this section. So, I just didn't know if you wanted to have tonight and have him amend and approve, or please want to wait tonight.
Yeah. I'm trying to wait 30 minutes. Nice. Nice.
Yeah. That's... How about that? How about that? Wait, are you... I think it's...
That's all.
Okay. Just... So, I'm sorry. We're checking. 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 This is correct.
Yes. 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 Yes.
You go first.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
No, she started. We can just... We'll start. We'll start. We'll start. We're not good yet. We're at 3 minutes. We're on the... This is difficult. It's just... Yeah. Yeah.
That's just... Yes. 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 Thanks for coming.
There are a lot of... There are a lot of... Where's she? Coming in Elephant or Beabadoo.
Oh, there.
New York. The last...
How many girls are there?
Yeah. I'm sure you've heard of them. Did it with one of your sisters?
No. The girl just got on our practice. She's a client.
Oh, like...
I think she likes... Yeah, she likes... And she also likes one.
This is... Okay.
For, like, the... Thank you.
I got... Was that in New York?
No. At, uh...
Oh, okay.
And then by... This...
Sure is. Happy birthday, man. Thanks.
Hi. Uh, Paul, we told you 7:50 PM. Uh, first up, we came into library gardens.
Library garden. He's right there. Uh, so, we met the rain. We met with people coming to talk about the rain gardens. Um, it was built. People we met here. You might want to open here. We walked over to the library and looked at it, uh, just to see what their plans were. Uh, I know it's been thought about a year. I was surprised. We were surprised because we knew that there was... Really. We had drawings. We had a plan. They were kind of asking what was going on. What, you know, where did things go? A lot of discussion around where it went down the driveway, et cetera. Uh, none of which we were expecting. I kind of was expecting to have a plan presented or something. There was nothing there. Uh, it was thought, oh, we could dig a well. We could dry off here. We could run pipes across the line. Uh, it was discussion about how we could help the basement, which is not really a concern. What we're talking about, not any good. I really don't need an example of where the rain garden would go. You know, they're talking about, oh, they're just basically not swale. Where it is, like, they didn't do that total amount of living. Just a depression, I guess. Not opposed to the idea. We just need to have another plan. It's not something that we all... When we got back, had discussions even that day. All three of us even better. These are the plans aren't going. Bill asked me to provide them. You know, but just the outside, when you're supplying them. Not, uh, that. It's not... It's not a state engineer. So, it's not scale. It's not on that. Provide that to... Say, hey, whoever's in charge of this is comfortable with a plan before somebody starts digging up on doing anything like that, uh, on the property. So, I know a couple of you guys are heading with it. I'm sure you probably want to do it at the same time. We just had no confidence in who came up to present to us. To let it get as far as like, before you start doing anything, we need to use some drawing. Some actions. I, you know, sort of that. And they were asking us questions. And I, you know, we put rock. I said, their thoughts. And they thought of rocks. Set aside the driveway. Yeah, sure. But I was like, wow. I mean, what plan? I mean, plow.
Wait, who's there? Who was there?
Who was there? It was Bill's there. Uh, I don't know if it was Langley. Were there? Were there? Uh, I know Jack, Arnn, Brendan, uh, Johnson, myself, the library were there. And I don't know that there was those two people. I think they're...
Ray Buckson was there. Lynn Sweet was there with the garden.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I think there was somebody else.
Who was it?
Eight people. Uh, and then there was DES. They were from DES. The, uh, the woman handling the, um, the former at DES. Uh, so, it's my understanding that they, you know, the issue, what, what they were doing is identifying where the rain gardens may go. Uh, this was, this was discussed a while ago with Carl. I know that apparently Carl did not really communicate with you about it.
Right.
Um, you know, the initial meeting, uh, quite some time ago. Um, the idea now is to basically, uh, now that we've had a chance to look at the property, look at the drainage, get an understanding of what can go where. It's my understanding that they're gonna come back with basically, um, schematics as to what they're gonna try to do. Um, here, we're gonna have two. One over here, one on this side to cover, um, the, uh, the impervious surfaces full covered by Town Hall. Um, and over there, that's why they were looking at the property to try to identify what areas they may have a concern and where they may need to design from. Uh, I haven't seen any designs yet. Um, I expect that that's moving forward. Um, you know, it's, it's a process like anything else. Um, I know that you guys, you've conveyed that you have concerns about this going in at all. The library, they wanted to go in. You don't have to put it in. No big deal.
I, I think we just need some drawing to understand it.
Well, that's part of the process.
Down to, you know, like, there. I said, where is the gutter drain? They're going there. Into the garden. That's two or three now. Well, that's a rainbow. Okay. It's, it was pretty odd. So, I sort of, kind of, again, I don't know if you guys, with the timeline for Town Hall, any word on it? Any direction? Yeah.
No. I mean, Bill, Bill Mazur's spearheading up, um, the coordination of it, uh, with the group. Um, I mean, I haven't gotten any updates from him. So, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
I'll reach out to him in a second.
I would talk to Bill. Um, I think Bill probably has more information than anyone on this. Um, you know, the funding's been approved. Uh, but like I said, if there was one before, it wouldn't matter. Not that big of a deal.
Well, let's see what they put back after they've done that.
Other comments? Any questions? Anything else you have on your part?
Yes. Actually, so, a couple of things. We have been looking at, you know, candidate for assistant librarian. Uh, we've had Beth, who's moved to town. She's a school librarian at the school. She's been helping out a few days. Uh, but it starts up there. So, we'll back there. She has a little engagement. We've identified, uh, a candidate, uh, wanting to give her... Bill ahead is within the budget. They don't have that turned out. Turn it out isn't working tonight. Uh, but it's, we're not really over budget. We're not increasing it. So, we have to assess if we haven't spent it on Carl over the last year. He's our highest paid employee. He's complying towards this. As it looks towards next fiscal year budget, obviously, we're staying the same there. We're not planning to afford this other than what we might talk about in terms of raises or increase for the staff. Uh, within that, uh, if you guys know Brittany Thompson, that has been our assistant intern director. Doing a great job, helping us identify some holes. We were looking at trying to bring in a children's library and the Carl brothers, et cetera. That's a big draw for this town. Uh, that would get us back to where we were with four people, uh, on staff. Because children's library can come in eight hours, which is not, not, not a big deal. But we are looking at arrows to follow. If you're not bringing it out, we'll share that with you guys. So, you can see the budget. Basically, balance, it is balanced, not going over this year at all. But it's basically balanced, it is balanced, not going over this year at all. That's where we're headed, and we will offer a letter up to the candidate and we'll send it to you guys for review, it's happening as well. We'll do that after this.
Do you guys particularly do a background check for the library? You know, just coordinate with you for that.
Great, that's him. Yep, and then on another note, we had Scott Campbell, who's our consultant, to help us get to the four to five, three to five year plan. He's come in and he's helped us do a lot of things and also helped Brittany on some of the things and recommend places to go for both her core and the staff. But really looking at updating their policies and then going through and planning now. Hey, we want to go to this library, what, what other kinds of events and activities can we offer to do that? To help keep, number one goal is to keep our staff competitive. And we've shared with you many times with this board and other boards, not trying to be the best, but we're just trying to be in the height of this assembly needs. It'd be really difficult for a library ourselves to track that, right? And what does that mean in terms of benefits, what, what are the benefits? Scott, that also works, Stratton, consults for several libraries, he's one of them, he's a Stratton House Assistant Director. But he's been great help for us when we set up a better plan. He's given us, um, ten hours per month, right, to do this, coming in Saturdays, getting working for here and there. But if the budget's hidden, if dinner, if our budget's, that will go over here, it's not any add, and it won't be worth getting called and applying towards this. So I have others that I shared with you guys. And we have a book, but we're just looking at all hot deals to revitalize coming out of COVID. Going on, I would call, going up, COVID will go a bit, and coming back and trying to offer most of the town services out of that. Through Brittany and the team's help, doing pretty, I've done a pretty good job of dancing with kids in there and keeping corporate going towards that. And Brittany, Brittany herself, vet up an hour, pretty good guys. So that stat, the last bit of fun is the evaded process that we had with the wiring, the flooring. When we went through the flooring, we came up with carpet, the carpet itself, we said, there was a type of tiles when we tested. It came back positive for eighty percent asbestos in the tiles themselves. And then the masthead was glued, that's what we defined, so there's nothing in that. We gotta take that out. I have a little, you know, the U T shed, we'll see the tile, the quotes. I'm waiting to get the quotes back now, but it will need definitely, I want to check that for that.
One week, I'm sorry?
Yeah, one week, we're padding a little bit. Since everything, since everything's coming out of the library.
What are you putting down under the top?
It'll be that, it'll be that carpet. You need cement underneath so we can go carpet with that for the second carpet.
You need to put that, and pack the board down and that carpet itself?
Yeah, it's packed, it's something, there were type of squares, most libraries, kids have that. But since everything's coming out, we're trying to, we're trying to look at it again, trying to refresh library, new people in. Rewards, for sure, looking at some of the things that we can do when they get new, they can do, uh, furniture, et cetera. Getting those throwbacks, we'll be back to share that. The friends, the library, the very generous, they just said, hey, they helped out with a lot of this, so we're working closely to definitely do that.
What are you doing?
The library carpet, so they said, they even building the carpet.
What are you looking at doing this winter?
Probably end this, so we have kids going back to school, it's kind of busy time for us. But as I found today, the guy who quoted, he can do it a week, but fifteen days prior to the job, I guess I'll let it stay now. We'll pad that next year, we'll go through this in the middle of August. And we're getting multiple quotes, I told everybody we're doing that, so I'll share those with you guys. I'll put it in the stack, and I'll send it to you guys to handle that in one spot. It's not difficult to incorporate it, how to proceed, but, and then we're going to get all the insurance, all that stuff. Make sure that it's all well covered. Really wanting to stay on this one.
No, make sure they're.
And I know the last, yeah, the last step is once they do the work, they have to have, each, and whatever is a job, has to come in and they do an air test at the end. So that's the final side, but that's by the state.
Other questions? You guys will be ready for budgets in the next week?
Yeah.
That's, that's going to be coming up.
And that's what Scott's talking about, so it's like, it's like, yes, we can do the normal ones in that process, but I think what we're raising, we want to show what could you.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
When somebody says, what is a, a, a library benefit, or what, what do you think we want to show? I'm saying what we need to get, it's all about, you know, maintaining what you can count.
Great, Brittany, thank you for shutting up. Appreciate it. Certainly been helpful. Both of the libraries are telling me. Right, any else?
Thank you.
You're welcome. You get a check of the bill?
What?
You get a check of the bill?
Yes.
Uh, next up, hundred seventy-fifth warrant article, so. Um, in 2022, we passed a warrant article providing appropriate $5,000 for the hundred seventy-fifth town celebration. And in 2023, we passed a warrant article at another $5,000. That was what was planned, basically break up to $10,000 that will be spent next year for the hundred seventy-fifth celebration festivities. There were, uh, there was a question about the auditor because of the setup of the expendable trust fund, which we did in the 2023. Warrant article with the select board asked agents to expend from the fund. The, as I understand it, the auditors have requested that we, we send the money and we issue a warrant article to do this. Personally, I'm not inclined to do that. I think we've established a trust fund, sending the funds there isn't really an issue, but it's open up for discussion.
Want to see an issue? The funds are there.
The funds are there, they're now in the trust fund, uh, which was established, the select board was established as agents under the warrant. So they're all there.
I'm good.
All right, so, um, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to, on the record, that the, um, the board will take no additional action regarding the expendable trust fund for the hundred seventy-fifth town celebration.
One second.
All on favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, signage, Burn Family Farm. Can you go now? Open this?
We see a letter from a citizen in town in regards to signage of Burn Family Farm. Do thirteen June, which was addressed at that time, we received it, Burn Family Farm sends a letter on the eleventh of July, telling us that the signage as far as the black letterboard sign slash the sandwich boards sign have been moved and now consider themselves in compliance. And subsequent to that, twenty eighth and twenty first, this is those signs were back out. Let me see, from the address, those signs being back out there, contrary to the agreement.
Yeah, I can speak to this part, I was supposed to leave that one. Uh, yeah, I did put those signs back out when I drew on the thirty-seven, and I saw all the signs, I figured that was just a little incentive for it. For it, because I assume there was not special treatment for just Burn Family Farm. So when I saw eight, I don't think of other properties, I figured that was just a little incentive for it.
I'm not aware of any other sandwich boards, but if, if there's a complaint from a citizen, we'll address it. Our job as a board is not to diagram the town, cite, we get complaints, we address them, much like we did in this one.
Who's the citizen?
Excuse me?
Who's the citizen?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and now the citizen complaint, it's creepy.
Okay, thank you.
It's creepy.
Thank you. So.
Creepy, creepy.
So in that complaint, the citizen did say, but all businesses should be treated equally in town? You think that was in there, so I'm, I'm just wondering how the application of the sign orders is being applied only to Burn Family Farm and not the other citizens in the district?
No, if, again, the, the, the town has to work this way as long as, as I know, which is, if there's an issue that the town needs to address and a citizen brings it before the town, the town has a responsibility to address. If you, if you have an issue, if you think that there's a violation going on in town, feel free to, uh, send a notice to this board, to the town, um, and the board will address it.
I try and spend my time, it's wasting other businesses' time. I'm always doing that, so.
I, I understand.
I'm always doing that on my business.
Decent people don't do that.
Yeah, I spend my time trying to go to the board.
Again, there are, you know this, there are ordinances in town, ordinances you have agreed to on numerous occasions to abide by, and you're not.
I will take my signs down, but I also want you to take a drive down, check that. I mean, you just know that there are only a fine display of one neighbor that complains or two. And the majority of people who don't complain don't get heard, that's not how the support works.
Uh, look, again, we don't go around peeking over people's fences to see.
You do go out and put a sound monitor on monitors up around people's property on the second floor.
That, when you agree to that.
It's sound monitor?
Yes, go look at the December agreement you had with the planning board. It, it, you agreed to abide by the sound, uh, the sound, uh, regulations in the town.
Correct.
Okay, so the town is monitoring that to see if you are complying with that.
Thank you for that.
Why are we monitoring other people to see if they're complying?
I, I, excuse me.
I hear gunshots all the time.
Please, you will have order to address this. You will speak when you are called upon, thank you, okay, we're going to keep order here.
Oh, yeah, sure.
If you keep it up, I'll ask you to leave. Thank you. So.
Make my day.
I, it, look, you guys have business before us. If you don't want us to address the business, then I'll adjourn the meeting.
Can't be responsible for people's safety now.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just making clear to you, if, if that's how you want to approach this, then we can approach it.
You can't hold me responsible for this.
I, I'm not holding you responsible, I'm, I am passionate. I am letting you know, because you guys have business before us, you want us to address it. These are your supporters in the, I'm not holding you accountable, I'm telling you, if we continue down this road, I'll adjourn the meeting. So, you agreed to the sound monitoring, the town took its responsibilities seriously under that agreement and were monitoring it. There was a complaint made about the sign boards. If you want to make a complaint, if anybody wants to make a complaint, the town will act on it. That's how it works.
I don't blame anybody about my neighbors' decisions.
Great, then you don't have to.
I don't.
But if other people have a problem with their neighbor violating a town ordinance, and they report it to this board, this board has a responsibility to do it. If somebody was dumping oil in the back of their yard and a neighbor told us about it, we would have a responsibility to address it. To bring them before the board, to address it, and take action if, if necessary. You want us not to do this, I'm sorry, we're not going to make an exception. You have a problem with somebody else's signs, let us know.
The problem is we are the exception. The other business gets treated with this. All right, we can move forward, it doesn't matter, you're concerned.
You, I'm sorry, let's see here. Uh, letter to the planning board, um, that you agreed to in 2015, saying you were going to meet town requirements, uh, uh, all your signage shows, meet town requirements and be reviewed by the building inspector prior to installation. So, I, I, I guess the problem that we're having here is, is that you're saying that you're going to abide by the ordinances. You're saying that you're going to abide by the rules of the town, but you continually don't do it. And you expect us to ignore that.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Any other issues on the signage?
Yeah, and the other part of the complaint was that your sign does not meet zoning requirements for mention. And that you have eleven signs instead of one sign. Required for six, the, and these are the top ordinances. If the ordinances are not acceptable, go through a process and change the ordinances. We do not have the opportunities, there are the option to remove the RSA, or the top ordinances. So if there is a violation of the sandwich board signs, which I trust this time you will recognize, and also there is, you need to address the sign that you currently have in place.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on signage? All right, um.
Michael.
Quick question, quick question, I'm just curious, what, when you say a sandwich, like, what kind of sign was an issue?
It's the sandwich boards that are in the public right of way, actually, it's not just the town, but under the DOT permit, they're not allowed to have those sandwich boards in the right of way.
So like the one that the church puts up in front of the church is in, in the right of way?
Something like that.
Is that these?
Yeah. Under the DOT permit language, it's, they're, they're having that in the right of way.
So the one that's, that goes in front of the church, is that not in the right of way?
I presume that it is.
Is there a reason not?
I presume it is.
In the right of way?
I presume that it is.
I guess no. I guess no neighbors complained about the church, because that would be creepy.
You're correct.
Yeah, it would be creepy.
So if you would like to actually make a formal complaint to this board, we'll take it up.
I don't want to make a formal complaint, because I'm not creepy to my neighbors, like other neighbors in this town.
Thank you.
So my question would be, as we said, that you go around town looking for these things, which is understandable, but the church, I do presume that it is, or are we trying to go in quick there? Then we walk pretty much by, you tell me here, so how do we know this stuff?
A-again, if somebody wants to issue.
But you see it, you're on the board, if you see it, why wouldn't you take that up?
A-again.
I wager that's inside the sidewalk on the church property.
I don't know, but if somebody wants to raise a complaint, I'll go out there, I'll, I'll pull down the right of way dimensions for Route eighty-five. We'll, we'll, uh, make a measurement of that. If need be, we'll bring the church in here. Nobody's made a complaint to this board about that. Not one person. If somebody would like to, if any of you would like to submit a complaint, we'll act on it. We've acted on every complaint that has come before this board, whether it was, uh, a property down on, on Route one away, whether it was a Hazel property that it took us seven years to address, whether it's a signage issue, we'll address it. But, again, if somebody would like to submit a complaint, have at it. Great, anything else on this?
Just, like, is the complaint, like, is the complainant, is that the person who makes the complaint, is that public?
Public record.
So who, like, who, is it, I'm just curious, is there, like, one person who makes the same, like, multiple complaints, or is it?
Well, we're seeing one complaint with respect to the sign. Against public record? Anybody can look at it?
Without the name?
Where are you looking at?
No, sure, they can, they can.
Where can we find the name?
Go request the letter, the, the complaint.
From the town clerk.
From the town clerk, yeah.
I would like the letter, it's with the name on it.
Actually, Jeremiah has the letter, he knows exactly who this is.
I'm out here, Jeremiah.
What am I? All right. If there's nothing else on that, we'll move on. Uh, let me skip down to the oil bids, so we've received one bid from Palmer with respect to the oil.
Right.
Now we're trying to open this bid. Uh, we're going to solicit additional bids, if we open it, you have public record, obviously, it, it, you have to then go back up or seal bids.
There have been other resources that I've contacted from the year back to the one.
Yeah.
Of course.
Yes. So we'll hold off on, on opening this bid and addressing the oil bids, but I just want to make sure everyone's clear, we're holding up, not because we haven't received any, but because we need additional bids.
Two points, you need to verify them, and you're sliding in, we need to set another date.
Um, I mean, we'll, we'll hopefully be able to attempt this, attempt to deal with this at our next, uh, next meeting, and we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Keisha, can you just reach out to Palmer, let them know that we heard their bid remains sealed, and that, um, we anticipate to receive additional bids before our next meeting in August, at which point in time we'll open the bids.
Can I get a copy of the association, what we have to, the companies?
Yeah, yeah, just ask Sue, just ask Sue, Keisha, for it.
All right.
Maybe you can get that. Okay, um, let's see here, uh, P A twenty-eight form. So, um, we have to make a decision about whether we will or will not be using P A twenty-eight statutory forms. Um, we've been using these regularly for the last six years, I think. Sue hates them, Keisha hates them. I find some value in them, uh, given the, uh, the information provided, uh, especially the current use. This was an issue actually, um, six or seven years ago, when we, um, had a dispute about property coming out of current use and ended up, um, before the, uh, land board up in Concord. Unfortunately, we did not have inventory forms at the time, uh, and it would have been extremely helpful if we had. It is a pain for, in terms of a clerical work. But it is what it is. I'm in favor of keeping them, I don't know, you guys had a discussion at the last meeting?
No, we postponed it, well, we did, I am opposed to the P A twenty-eight one. We're cooking spending probably $2,000 on staff hours and manning, postage, et cetera. Which the information is implicated both on, uh, building permits and assessments. And the question, the census question is often coming incomplete, and I find it very intrusive for the town to be inquiring, who's living in this house? And, uh, getting this information. The money that is collected is, we're spending approximately $2,000, and we're collecting $4,500 to $5,000, penalty of $50 per person. If you request a waiver from the board, you can wait, and so then it becomes a moot point. I find this more intrusive than when we talked about, discussed the E nine, the data going into the broadband mapping, and, uh, I just, I just, it was a waste of time and resources. As far as the $3,000 surplus, if we can work with a number of $5,000 a year, uh, if we want to have that money in general fund, I think we should appropriate it, hold on to that. And one time, uh, that you referenced, Michael, I think we probably spent more than time and energy and effort, the staff, the resources and funds, to pay for that. So I am strongly opposed to P A twenty-eight.
So I, I, I kind of went through this, uh, last week, uh, but didn't want to hear what you had to say and why you thought it was useful, and it, it to this point, it sounds like it was kind of a one-off situation, whereas, you know, a lot of this information, you know, is questionable as to the liability, but if we do get it another way, so I would, I would also be against using it.
Just one other thing I'll add here is that, um, we are having a reassessment of the town. And under our, um, abatement requirements, one of the persons asked is whether you successfully filled out your P A twenty-one.
But the P A twenty-eight is optional, determined by the town, and many towns such as previous towns I have lived in did not use the P A twenty-one.
I, I, I understood, understood, I'm just saying that if, if, it, will be an issue, there'll be more information before. I'm just saying that if, will we initiate, there'll be more information required with, presumably, under the reassessments and abatement, so. Again, I'll, I will make a motion for us to use the PA 28 form for 21, is there a second? All right, hearing none, then I assume that we will not. Great. So we have a couple land use change forms requests, so there's a Lila Lane is requesting to take 7.98 acres out of current use, map 208, Lot 50-5. This is the development up off of this castle. Any questions about the land use change? Hello?
No?
You're good? I will make a motion to accept the land use change request for Lila Lane LLC, map 208, Lot 15-5.
Second.
Second by all favor.
Aye.
So the second one, I have a little map here. So this deals with Lot 62 on this map, Lot, map 209, Lot 6.2. Currently, that lot is actually a part of these larger road lot across the street, goes across Route 87 onto the main line. What you see here is the request under the right trust to take this parcel out of current use. The lot is 5.672 acres, again, it's map 209, Lot 6-2, so that that lot would basically become its own independent lot, not associated with the 100-plus acres across the street. Questions?
No.
I'll make a motion to accept the land use change request from the right trust for map 209, 6-2.
Second.
Second by all favor.
Aye. Aye.
Next up, first list of abatement. So this has been an outstanding item, where you can get some feedback from legal counsel regarding whether the board had the ability to provide for abatement, given the facts of the case. That one, Town Council has indicated that if we find good cause, that we actually have the authority, contrary to the assumption or the inference from prior correspondence with Town Council. So it looks like we have the authority, if we find good cause, to abate. I don't think we need to go and rehash the specifics of this, I'll just open it up for discussion and comment regarding the first list of abatement request.
Has there been any recent commentary?
I haven't, I haven't heard from the first list yet, but, I don't know, has Chris come in at all?
I haven't heard from him since I was in the meeting.
Any thoughts about if town thinks that there's good cause for abatement?
I think there's good cause, I mean, I think we established that at the time we spoke about this. The question was, what could town do after we go? So, I know that was an agreement, but doing whatever we could to correct here, because it wasn't malicious in any way, I mean, it was, you know, scope gap, like, everybody missed it.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, our predecessor missed it, Chris missed it, town missed it, so I think there's, the fact is, though, that it's paid over and above on its property taxes over the years for this lot, which is, is not available. Awesome?
Well, I support the concept of making this ready, it just becomes a nut to crack to ascertain what the amounts will be.
Yep.
I'd almost like to, since we've been working on this for a while, so we have first committed, so we just talk.
I don't think Chris is an issue, but I think we're well-established now, that I think we all agree that there is good cause if we choose to make an abatement, given the facts of the situation, the duration of the overpayment for 17 years. So, if, that works for you?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, I can support the abatement, I just would like to speak with you a little more back on it.
Can you make sure that this is on for next meeting, and we have the first lists in for that? Great, thank you. So we'll defer that, and next, back to you. Okay, stone wall removal. So another item from last time. We discussed this two meetings ago, you guys had the hiring meeting, the, I think Derek provided additional documentation for everyone, Chris Griffin also volunteered to come in to talk about it, we needed it. I opened it up for discussion, comments on the board with respect to the area. You want to jump in?
My ask for you being here, Chris, is if I just, in hindsight, maybe it would have been more conducive to actual guiding and process, and if we're taking a formal vote on it, that would have left a clean track or documentation going forward. I totally understand the reasoning, I don't know whether you want to repeat that again, but the reason of why you presumed it was state of the care?
Well, what we did vote on was reaching out to the easement monitor and Derek Durbin for guidance. So then, once we got that guidance, when they gave us their opinion, we didn't think we needed to vote on whether to approve that opinion or not, because that was, you know, it was suspended, so. So, we got their interpretation that disrupting a stone wall for the driveway there is not a violation in terms of easement, as long as all three parties involved came to an agreement, then we thought it was done. And Derek, the last email, said to us, that I don't think there's any more to the commission needs to do, that it's not, you know, just to cross the piece without the eyes on-
Of course, yeah.
-precluded for what your unintended consequences come down to. That was my point on the answer, cc issue.
Any other comments? Mike?
We did confirm that the wall is not a property boundary, we did confirm that. There's other questions?
So one of my conversations I had with Derek about that, because if you look at each section, each original grant, and it talks about using it, not using it, not serving it, like, it's bound to the RSA, it's a requirement to it. So I talked to Derek, I said, this is worth, boundary runs along the wall, it's not under the wall, does it run with the wall, and so all depended on who's drafting the survey. And he said, pretty much, it is worth submitting. And then we get into the whole issue of right of way to the top, the state, specifically on 20 feet, and then for 20 feet, you throw it in, it's a center line, it's a total can of, it's a total mess, as far as who was doing it. I understand, and I read the detail, all the emails that have come through, I heard the RSA dealing with it, and I've read the, this document that showed up today, and I've been through the conservation easement in great detail. I'm the point now, we're already prepared on this.
So, I think a general acknowledgement that, you know, first off, just for episode clarity, what we're discussing here is the stone wall that runs from the existing driveway down Route 87 to the property boundary at the park. I think a general acknowledgement that that's, stone wall is there, certainly the removal agreement references it in the brighter places. I then looked at the conservation easement, as I'm sure you guys did, and the critical aspect of this that concerned me is, under the purposes section, Part D, and basically throughout the document, it constantly references, basically, scenic conjournment, preservation of the existing property, preservation of views, et cetera. So there was clearly a desire to preserve, to the extent that could be preserved, the nature of the property when it went into the easement. So, the specific mention of the stone walls, then, is in Section 2H, which says, "There shall be no defacement, movement, removal, or alteration of any stone walls, or other monuments or arches that serve as legal boundaries, as per NPA RSA 4726, or as the legal boundary of easement, as described in Exhibit A." What concerns me here is that we're talking about moving, altering, removing portions of a stone wall that act as the legal boundary. So then, the issue that got raised, or the conservation commission and Town Council said is, well, the stone wall actually no longer is the boundary. I question that, but more to the point, Section 2H doesn't necessarily, in my opinion, I'm reading of Section H, I guess it depends upon where you want or need a comma in there, because it says, "There shall be no defacement, movement, removal, or alteration of any stone walls, or other monuments or arches that serve as legal boundaries." It's not clear to me that there's a requirement in that language that the stone wall be the boundary, especially in light of the purpose of this, which is to preserve that property to the extent that it was when the easement was entered into. So, I guess my question is, was there ever any discussion about that language and the meaning of that language, with respect to the assumption, what seems to me to be an assumption, that there's a requirement that that stone wall be illegal, I'm sorry, be serving as the boundary currently, because clearly, under the easement and Exhibit, and in Plan A, it was originally noted as the boundary, under that plan and easement. So, my question is, was this discussed and addressed to council?
We reached out to council for determination if it was permissible to destroy the wall. We also reached out to easement monitor. So those are the people we pay money to, to do this for.
Great.
They said it's permissible, it's not a violation.
Okay.
And the Department of Justice, Michael Hayley, who was Assistant Director of the Charitable Trust Committee, said, pretty much, whether it's within the easement, or whether it's in the DOT property, that if the three involved parties, the DOT, the burden, and the town, agree to breach the wall-
Correct.
-it's permissible, it's not a violation.
Of course, if they, if they, again, there's no doubt, if the town basically says, you know, our reading or interpretation of this easement says that you can do this, yes, all three parties agree, of course.
Correct.
My problem is, this came up earlier this year, when, when there was a change to trust here in town, and I was quite surprised that the DOJ and the trustees of our trust funds never actually reached out to the descendants of the, and the people who actually set up the trust and made a change. I have a real problem, there's a lot of interpretations that DOJ has made, the most recent one being Dartmouth, I don't know if you've heard about that, but they basically said that Dartmouth can reallocate a bequeafment that Dartmouth, somebody made to Dartmouth, with some specific language ahead of it, and so they took the $3.8 million and reassigned it to something else. So, yes, DOJ is gonna say, sure, if you guys agree, you can change that. I'm reading this language here, and I understand this numerous ways to interpret it, I would argue. I see this as meaning the request of the person, of the people who put this into conservation, given the purpose, the statements throughout this, to basically preserve this as, you know, a scenic view of this property. I read this language as saying, they do not want that stone wall for use.
Well, our easement monitor, who we paid to be the expert on this, I think this is a pretty powerful statement in her correspondence, I cannot believe a removal of a portion of the stone wall for the purposes of a safer driveway could be detrimental to any of the purposes of easement. the purposes of the easement."
Again, I'm reading this language here, that says, "No defacement, movement, removal, or alteration." I don't see how that is in conjunction with easement.
As per RSA 472.
Oh, but is that reference to the wall, or is it reference to the monuments and markers that serve as legal boundaries, which is exactly what the 472-6 says, removing and altering boundary markers? Now, walls can't be boundary markers, but they don't have to be. In this case, it certainly seems under the plan that it was the boundary marking. Doesn't it seem that it was maintained very well, but it still exists as a wall, which, again, I think everybody acknowledges. My personal opinion here is, I don't see how this upholds the desires as stated in this easement. Granted, somebody may have a different opinion than that, I have a hard time with this, a real hard time with this.
So, I already saw, if you look at the conservation easement, and then you look at Exhibit A, which the surveyor said property, and wagering that it's done approximately 17 March of 2004, I've been able to find an actual date on that. But if you read the second paragraph, it's been highlighted through these copies, the boundary, if you follow the declarations of the surveyor, runs south, and then such a heading from such a distance, and then south, making a right turn, five degrees with such a distance, along the stone wall to a point. So, and that goes back to the point I was speaking earlier about wordsmithing, is that a long stone wall, is that set boundary, or is the surveying point inside the boundary, or the whole issue comes back down to, well, I see this as a two-fold issue. One, the owner, when they, the grantor, when they signed this, had this language in front of them, and agreed to, agreed to this language. Two, there's wordsmithing, it goes along through various tracks. Three, the last survey, just trying to jump around here, the last survey that I'm concerned, if anybody else is going to be aware of, was in 2004, has there been a survey that has transpired in this system since you had? Jeremiah? So, and then we go to the whole point, where I totally understand what you're making of it, but now the state comes down, the DOT comes down, and says the stone wall is inside the right of way, and that's a head scratcher for me, except for the three rod boards and stone walls across the two walls, the stone walls maintaining the three rod setting. And I think this is one of those things where you're, so, I totally understand your reading, but I think this-
This is no good answer here.
No, but I think there is, and I don't want to say the DOT is just kind of going, oh, it's in our right of way, even though I just said that. I don't, I don't-
My problem here is, I have a hard time believing, given the nature of this easement and the language throughout this easement, that the owners of this property, before they'd put it into, into conservation, wanted anybody to crack that front stone wall. That makes, that runs contrary to practically everything in this easement language.
Except, I'll counter that with, if you go through the initial purposes of the use of the maintained agriculture, further promote, yada, 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 to open the stone wall at this point, or further promote that, and meet the current issues of public safety, and to maintain the business.
But this other access to the property, which is easily recognized as thorough.
Such as, well, there's two options, if I recall-
There's access to the property down on Cooper Road as well, there was the original driveway which was access to the property.
Well, the original driveway was closed when the current driveway came in.
Correct.
And that had to be closed because of, as you say, site safety issues.
Of course.
That's the current driveway, yes.
But what I'm saying here is, when they wrote the easement, it is not like this was a sealed property all around, and they had no intention of actually allowing anybody onto the property. The conservation easement itself identifies that activities can take place on the property, and that there is access to the property from a variety of locations. What they specifically said, though, was, by the way, these boundaries, where these stone walls are our boundaries, and again, the most obvious one is the one along 87, shouldn't be cracked.
But, I will also-
If, put it this way, if they didn't want, if they, if they thought that that stone wall should be there, then why any language like that in this easement at all?
Or then why did the wanting to say the stone wall was a boundary?
I think the assumption was, under Plan A, under the plan, the stone walls the boundaries, any references to that? Jeremiah?
So, we have the National Resource Conservation Society come out and ask, we can share with you, I don't think that the wall is on my property period, or in the conservation easement, and I don't think that any of this conversation applies, as a consequence of that, and this is just, not missed. So, here's a copy, I have one picture to share with you all, multiple pictures, but same idea. So, SCAS grows right here, here's the stone wall behind the farm, there's a pin allocated right here, NRCS, National Resource Conservation Society deemed this, and I have an email that I can share with you as well, with DOT, they both agree the stone wall is not on my property, and it's in the state right of way.
That even though it's in the right of way, and it's not, it's in-
Sorry, go ahead.
Does it have a pin at the corner?
No, it is a pin at the corner, this pin is close to where the driveway actually-
How far is it up from the current driveway?
I want to say if you're heading west on-
If I move the driveway, how far?
Hundred feet on the right, I have, it's like 120.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's probably one hundred feet.
Kind of makes one call it two.
Hold on, let me just, go ahead Jeremiah.
Let me just read this. I, this is from Matt Larkin, District Conservation, I believe the town attorney has a copy of this, from the National Resource Conservation Society. I confirm the NHDOT that it is 50 feet from the center of the road.
So, I'm sorry, you got a little rule.
So, yeah, so this is from Matthew Larkin, and he is a district conservations for the National Resource Conservation Society for our district. And these are physical, not mine. Hi, I'm Jeremiah, I reviewed my notes, we're going to conduct a cultural resource review for the disturbance, however, when Jeremiah met with the NHDOT, they indicated the stone wall on the same right of way. I confirm with the NHDOT that it is 50 feet from the center of the road. While I was inspecting the area for proposed entrance, I found the survey marker and photographed it. The survey markers on the far side of the stone wall, its back, were sent back to indicate attached photos. So, all in all, that area of the stone wall is not part of the easement. Please let me know if you have more questions.
Are you arguing that the, that the right of way now is 50 feet wide?
No, I'm saying that, well, I'm not arguing that this is what Matt, I'm saying that according to-
But what you're saying is that the DOT says that that right of way is 50 feet wide.
From the center.
From the center.
What's the date of time?
Oh, okay, I-
That is from March 23rd, but these are my words, his words not mine.
I understand, but you're making an argument that that should be the fact that we consider here with respect to the stone wall?
I'm making the argument that this board just shouldn't be talking about the stone wall at all, that it's not on my property. I don't own that stone wall.
So, are you saying that we don't need to address this agreement at all?
I'm saying, I, we, and you can also see, I'm sure you've seen emails from our lawyer, has said we don't need this agreement. We, I heard the idea that this agreement would move forward with the understanding it would be, and this is from the town's lawyer as well, that this would be a smooth process, and just a proximate, not a direct, we did not think that we have multiple meetings to discuss.
Fair enough. Hold on, Olivia, is it your contention that the stone wall is not part of the?
It's unclear. And this, my thing is, sorry. What, what the NHD office said is that the stone wall is used, the property description, description does use the stone wall as a boundary marker, that's from the attorney general. So, the provisions apply, even when the wall is physically located on DOT's property. However, we would consider compliance with RSA 472-6 to be compliance to the Conservation Act in this instance. That allows for moving slash removing stone walls by mutual agreement.
The DOJ, let's be clear, the DOJ is not taking a position about that stone wall, it's taking the position that if all the parties agree, it's okay. That's what their language says.
Which is, that's what-
What they're saying is, is that if the town agrees, there's no issue on their part with respect to this. But, everything I've read from the DOJ, I'm curious if you agree with this statement, the DOJ takes no position about where that stone wall is or is not. They take the position that if the three parties agree, then you can do whatever you want with that stone wall. That's what the DOJ is saying. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
To add to-
Oh, feel free.
Easement monitor, then, just to tell you, what you just said, says that reaching that stone wall is not different from the purposes of the easement.
I, I, I just, I have a different, difference of opinion about that, but that's fine.
Because some of the purposes are different.
I understand.
Agriculture.
But my argument here is, my argument here is, the easement was written, and there was other means of access to this property besides cracking the stone wall, that this easement seems to be here towards preserving, in my opinion.
So, I understand, but a couple of comments will clarify things. So, the location of the new proposed driveway entrance was chosen specifically, there's a pin on Jeremiah's side, but the wall is not on his property.
How far is that pin, would you believe that?
I, I, a part of the land, a few feet, yeah, I don't remember. But also, the location is a break in the stone wall. So, a specific location is chosen, there's a break in stone wall, it's not a complete stone wall, that's why that was chosen, to respect those items.
Was there a break there for people taking the wall down, or was that previous?
Previous, no, it was, it's, it's been a break, it looks like it's, I mean, it's all wooden right there, there's a break in the wall, there's not, there's no, DOT chose that hot spot.
I understand, I'm just curious about what the other's pointing with, if there was previous access to the-
Maybe, maybe 50 years ago.
Or if somebody built for the rocks.
Yeah.
I'm, I want to say for a little background, when you put in the driveway cut that you had down, did you have to open up the stone wall that time?
No, so it was already existed.
Jeremiah?
I just have to read the second paragraph on the first page of our easement, and it says, "The management and control of this conservation shall vest with the New Fields Conservation Commission." So, I was hoping for clarity from the select board, how they can wrap their, as on that sentence, and by what your documents support.
Well, Conservation Commission recommended it to us to enter into an agreement with the town. This, this stone wall agreement came through you guys after council and DOJ.
Sorry, can I ask a follow-up question? Do you agree with that sentence?
Do I agree?
That the management and control of this conservation shall vest with the New Fields Conservation Commission?
Yeah, it's clearly in the easement language.
So, in other words, if somehow this letter hadn't been generated, the driveway would have been fine with just conservation approval and DOT approval?
I'm sorry, did I say that?
If the management of this easement and the control of this easement resides with the New Fields Conservation Commission, and the issue we're talking about now is whether or not it was a violation to the easement, how am I standing, sitting in front of a select board talking about this easement when it says here that that is not the jurisdiction?
Because this, this agreement addresses a variety of issues.
It's a consequence of something, I do not understand, do you, why would we be talking about the easement if this is how it's written in the easement?
Understand, you're asking the town of New Fields to sign off on change of control of the easement, right? Not change of control, interpretation of the easement, okay? The Conservation Commission is not a representative of the town body, that's what this board does. So if there's something that the town needs to sign off on, okay, that is what this board does.
It's analogous, Jeremiah, to what we in Congress report to the full Congress for the managing branch of that branch of government. So, the Conservation Committee is held, those decisions come to the executive board to decide where, how to move forward on an issue.
So, are we saying that sentence is incorrect?
No, it's correct, it's clarified then, we have oversub, we have oversub, overall the committee planning board, the Conservation Committee, and all the others, that's where that comes from.
Well, I respectfully disagree with that. I would also add, this stone wall agreement by no means generated from us, this is written by the town attorney because of some, somebody wanting it on the New Fields side. Can you just please clarify, like-
Let me, let me, no, no, Jeremiah, please, Jeremiah, please, Jeremiah.
I wouldn't agree to doing a further document.
Jeremiah, nobody sitting on this board requested this agreement be drafted.
Right, I'm just clarifying that no one decided it is.
Okay, that's fine, I was unaware of that. My assumption was that, that you or your council requested disagreement.
No, your council requested.
Again, not at the request of any members of this board.
So, I just have one question, do you feel that this agreement is necessary for this scenario?
Honestly?
Like, if this never came up, and we decided to put the stone wall there, we had the DOT permit approved, the Conservation Commission said yes, do you feel that this agreement is necessary? Like, I'm just curious, like, in this scenario?
I have, I mean, my opinion of this matter, I have a, I have a real problem with cracking that wall.
Okay.
Okay, now, with respect to disagreement specifically?
Yeah.
Look, I would vote to support, I would not vote to support disagreement.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not giving you any legal advice here, what's-
Well, I'm just curious, like, if, you know, if that never came about, and then, you know, then we, we got our permit, we get it from the state, we're supposed to move the driveway, we've got the Conservation Commission and everyone else, then is it necessary to-
But that goes, that goes back to the whole relationship, which I guarantee you, with the way it works, the Conservation Committee would concur with that. So, if the executive board, whether or not to accept their recommendation to this thing?
Also, with the DOJ, town council, and easement monitor saying, the permissible way to breach the wall is for all three parties to come to an agreement.
And it will also bring unattended, unforeseen, unintended consequences.
And actually, Chris, that's a, that's a great point, which is, my guess is, in town council, in town council, having these, these conversations, and the DOJ suggesting that agreement be done, that is the rationale, I assume, that town council then drafted it, because nobody made this request when this was voted. Yeah?
Michael? I'm confused by what I see kind of running together here, because like, it seems like the Conservation Commission has done their job. We've talked with the easement monitor, who is an expert in easements, they've done their job, the DOJ has done their job in concurrence with the other experts, the town council agrees with what's been found out, and it seems that the root of the disagreement is that your understanding of the original intent of that easement. And it strikes me as being really hard to justify, when you've got multiple legal councils who are saying, this is, this is all right with us, and you've got the Conservation Commission saying, this is all right with us, and the DOT wants to do it, and you've got the town businesses complying with the DOT requirements, and it seems like we're at a full stop, because your understanding of the original intent is different than these other experts, and that, that is troubling, I don't see the logic there.
No, I understand, I, let me, let me just say, you know, back when the, when we were dealing with the protesters in town, DOJ came to this town and said, oh yeah, you guys can run these organs through tonight, in one night, one public hearing. And we said, no, that's not how we interpret how this should be done, and we weren't going to do that specifically out of concern for the legal consequences of taking that action, right? DOJ told us we should, state police said we should, town council said we should, we didn't, and we were right not to. I'm not saying that, that opinions like that don't carry weight, they do. But, other interpretations are certainly, I think, worthy of discussion here, and, again, if your, if, if your interpretation is based upon some specifics, I, I think there are some specifics here that raise real questions, in my mind, as to the intent and the purpose of this easement. So, I understand your point, you know, I, I am probably standing alone on this matter, but we'll have a vote on this tonight, this won't be held up in any way, shape, or form. It's, but I, you know, I have a different interpretation, I've had different interpretations in the past, some are right, some are wrong, I'm okay, I can live with it.
But, kind of business, I mean, that's the consequence of your opinion. Where, where you had the, the issue with protesters.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, you know, that was a legal impact that did not affect business. This one, the business is acting on the instruction of the town and DOJ. The DOT, the Department of Justice is fine, whether you agree with them or not. To me, what really makes sense is what the easement specialist said. And said, look, this is in compliance with this original easement, and you've got the Conservation Commission that has met with other experts and said, this is like the group in town is supposed to kind of do their homework on your behalf. They've given a recommendation, and still you're saying, not good enough.
I, first of all, the DOT, they're input into it, yeah, it's fine, it's driveway cut. They're dog in the fight, it's, we'll sign off because it's still on his own property. It's neither a gimmick, it's just, okay, fine, next, next case. DOJ's, uh, when this came from Attorney Jones' office, and if you look at, yeah, the, the nexus of that document, says, if everybody agrees, we're good. They did not go into debt and to the conservation easement. They just said, yep, we're good with it if everybody agrees. So to put an excessive amount of weight onto that, I think, is not, you know, I agree with you. DOJ, it's just like you're kind of going along. So now, moving sideways, uh, your applications for funds from the NRCS, is that what it is?
NRCS.
It's, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Um, what's the timeframe on that?
What do you mean?
When's the deadline?
For which part?
The Sony deadline. Okay, give me the first deadline, you have to be-
Well, we're actually past it because we were supposed to start our driveway.
Okay, DOT gave you till one to do the driveway.
They did not put a deadline on that.
I thought it was still late fall.
I think it took- They put like-
Six months?
They did put a deadline on it. They said they like, they're, they're, what they said was, and I paraphrase, I don't have the document in front of me, was, we're not the business of shutting down businesses, we also want the driveway done soon.
Oe, could I-
Hey, I was, yeah.
Could I ask a question relative to that, Lee? And this may go to Chief Young. The driveway issue, did that pertain to acquiring police on site? And then if the driveway is improved, do the police still have to be there? In other words, that access, wasn't that an issue for-
That's a fine planning board, if I, if I remember correctly, the planning board, that's how many people being improved and off there with law enforcement there. And that's where that came from.
Oh, you know, it's based on the, kind of the crowd size thing, not the driveway itself?
So my understanding is, the impetus of this whole thing is forsaken. It sounds like it's a doable thing if all parties agree. My, I'm wondering, is there a compromise here? Where you take the wall out, forsaken, you choose a new driveway, and then rebuild the stone wall where you post-
With the old driveway, with current driveway.
Where the curbs are at, I guess.
Yeah.
Now, to me, that would be a compromise.
It'd be, yeah, I think the stone wall would be more than what the dri- the new driveway would be, the new stone wall would be-
What's the cut on that, what do they have to reach, was it twenty-five?
I think it's twenty-five feet, yeah. And the new driveway is like thirty or something, I believe. I mean, I mean, the existing one is like thirty, but we could, we could extend the stone wall across to, to suffice the aesthetics. We could put plantings there, I mean, the plan is anywhere, we could put plantings there as well. So I think that kind of meets your concern, like, as far as, you know, the view of property from the road and, and that. Compromise, and the fact that there's already a break in the stone wall of the driving. Obviously, it's not big enough, but there's already an existing break there. And try to leave as many of the big trees there as well, you know, in the driveway.
Well, I guess that just kind of touched on it, I was just curious, maybe you had known that there was already a break there?
Uh, I, the plan itself just shows no break in the, in the wall.
Well, I was just curious, I was, was wondering, is this, because I didn't know if that, like, needs to give your concerns? As you said, we had a very big concern of putting a break in the wall, but there's part of-
But again, going by the easement language, easement language is specific to the plan, and the plan has the wall continuing from one end to the other.
But it's-
I don't know, and, and trust me, I understand exactly what you're saying, my point here is, break or not is irrelevant to the easement language that references a complete wall under the plan specifically.
Yeah, and I just want, sorry, I just want you to know that the purpose for that selection of that spot with driveways is because there's already a break there.
No, I understand.
So you want to take part in this whole, this whole wall.
Then one of the reasons I brought it up, I was just wondering, because you specifically said that you have a problem with it, not like outside of the easement, you were concerned about breaking it, which I, which I understand, but I just didn't know that-
No, I'm concerned that-
You were concerned that there was part of-
No, 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 my concern is, my concern is the language of the easement, to me, is fairly specific. And I would be shocked if what they're referencing here, right, espec- especially that front stone wall, which goes to the public views, nobody's looking at this property from the backseat. It is, the views along the scenic byway, which easement references, which is Route eighty-seven.
Yeah.
And so, between the plan language, the purpose language, and the specifics of the stone wall, I, yes, I, I have a real, I have a real problem with that. I get it, Conservation Easement Monitor has a different viewpoint on that, which is fine.
Well, also, scenic enjoyment, uh, the general, the general public, you might enjoy seeing a wall, I'm sure you enjoy seeing traffic, like, what-
Yeah, but I think you have to look at the intent of the town, the drivers. And I do imagine you have to go by the language that the driver and truck are interpreting, what they're saying. That's what makes it so difficult, especially if this isn't really a need, if somebody, you know, you've got a particular need. And how sharp is the words?
Right. And, and I would weigh equally the wording that, uh, protecting the property's long-term capacity to produce economically valuable forestry products and animal products.
And I would say, to be record, so. How would, how do you, how would you, more than that, if this was to pass, or this to pass it? Where are we going to say black and white, did you move that stone wall to the current, moving to black and white?
I mean, you-
I don't, I don't want, uh, we'll do it?
No, yeah, we can do it. Would you, I mean, if you voted on record today, would you agree that Jeremiah said it goes on record? He on record, even if it's written on that agreement, you can write on it, amend it, essentially, I mean, all the parties agree. I mean, I might be able to compromise that, everyone feels better.
What, what, from a process standpoint?
Yeah.
If, if a majority of the board were to support it to be amended?
Yeah.
Uh, with that language, then I think it would come down to Amy and Derek amending this to include that language upon which the board would sign. They would sign it tonight, because it's not amended. But we, we basically have a vote, and then, you know, if we have the language tomorrow, we'll just, we'll just show up and-
So you have to go sign, we can-
No, we, we could do that without having to wait until the next meeting.
Yeah.
We'd do it in a, in a process that would be, you know, as expeditable as, as allowed.
I think it's reasonable, as long as we make sure the language is seen.
It's something more than just back in the, down to the top and down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, we can look at it, we can look at it for sure.
Michael?
Other comments? You're good? Okay? Okay, can I ask a question?
Uh, where is all the language about stone wall agreements?
Section eight, please. Yeah. Part two, section eight, uh, page number, the point is eight.
Eight?
Yep. All right, any other comments? No.
I have a motion to, to accept the driveway modification as written, with the exception of there will be an amendment drafted reflecting the transitioning rock to, from the new opening to the current opening, and it be built in a quality manner of repeat.
I would, I, I would, let me just say, the language probably should, should say that it will match the current condition of the existing-
Except someone put it out in the house.
I, no, I, I, the, the wall segments that would be contiguous here, you know, I mean, that's the, the quality that-
It will be hand-staffed.
Not expecting the drywall with the paint or-
I, I don't think we, you know, we need to get, raise the standard here, I think it needs to be, you know, sm- you know? So that's, that's the language you, you are making. So, I have a motion to approve the stone wall removal agreement under the conditions of the proposed amendment. Is there a second?
All second.
There's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I will oppose. Last.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, what do you know, we'll meet this in Derek?
Um, I'll send an email to Derek and Amy tonight, um, informing them of the request to make that one amendment. And if they can agree to the language, we'll print it out, or come inside.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Between the three of you, how many times have you been to the property before?
Uh-
Then, you've been on the property since?
Well, since all this started, I have.
Have you been there before?
I mean, we've almost went a couple times, we've been down.
I've probably been on the property three or four times.
Three or four times, I've been there twice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, Phil's better. So, um, it is, I just want to make sure. So Jim Maxfield has agreed.
Okay.
In the building inspection.
Okay.
I talked to Larry Shaw, I warned him that Jim agreed. I asked Jim and Larry to meet, preferably with you. Um, to discuss process.
Okay.
And how this is going to work.
Great.
Um, I, I'm going to encourage you to reach out to both, do you have Jim Maxfield's contact here?
I do have it.
Okay, I, because I can, I can give it to you, you know, uh, contact them both.
Okay, because I have tried to reach out to them, they use the term.
If.
I understand. So, yeah.
I will press him to do so. Um, now that we, now that Jim has agreed, I, I honestly, I don't want to be involved in this at all. Um, but I need-
Should we pursue a process?
It should be. Jim is familiar with the town, he's familiar with the code.
Right.
He's done work for the town before.
Right.
So, go have a conversation with them, and if you run into problems, we can address it, but ideally-
I think if you just let Larry yell that, I'm, we'll bend over backwards if I'm aware of it.
And I told Larry that.
To meet him.
I said, Larry, you need to, you need to contact Jim, you need to contact the gardens, you, all of you need to sit down and figure this out.
Sounds great.
Now that we have somebody who's willing to do it.
Sounds good.
Philip?
Quick question, will Jeremiah be CC'd on that memo you're sending here?
I can, sure.
Sure.
I don't mind that. Um-
Thank you.
So we, you guys are all set on that then?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. All right, next up, uh, so we have, uh, May thirtieth minutes, there was some changes, changes, was the-
Yes, was it the disposssession of the driveway?
Yeah, the Gerardi thing?
That just got adjusted, yeah.
So, that was the only one.
Rest, yeah.
Rest is all, all the same, so. I'll make a motion to approve the May thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-three, select board meeting minutes, uh, as an amendment.
So?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great, thank you. Um, revenue and expenses, we're to lie, take a quick look, if you have questions, throw out. As you're looking through these, by the way, one thing I want to mention about the frivolous abatement. So if we were to abate money, let's, for argument's sake, say five thousand dollars.
Sure.
It doesn't come out of the operating budget, okay? We make, that is an adjustment to the tax rate, it is not an adjustment to the operating budget. And I say this so that everyone's clear, the, our bottom line budget number is the number that we cannot go over, right? We can't spend more than what we, the town body approved.
Right.
For expenses. Any abatement doesn't account, doesn't count against that bottom line.
Okay.
Just so that you guys are aware.
Yeah.
What it could do, it could be the tax rate's going to be increased by a small amount.
It may adjust the tax rate, but it will not impair our budget, which, again, so, for argument's sake, if somebody came in front of us and we abated them two hundred thousand dollars, not that we're doing that here. And, and we said, no, we have to do this, or there was a legal reason we had to do it, it would not blow a hole in the operating budget, it would just affect the tax rate. So I, I just want to make sure that you guys understand that as we move forward on that, that the operating budget itself, it, it won't impact that.
Yep.
Should we make a long line?
We're not going to get enough money on cars.
Nobody's buying them.
No.
Nothing but-
I mean, we're, we're doing okay for now.
Oh, uh, as we get to, just to put that on page eighty-five.
Of the budget?
Seventeen.
Yeah.
The town hall sidewalk, she's racking that up, it's writing.
Oh, yeah.
And it's going to be a little bit extra because of the additional work in the tops, the rain burden.
Yeah, for the pipe.
Yeah.
Because they've got both the sidewalk and moving on. Should not, it'll be one below ten thousand for five hundred.
Great.
Yeah.
Thanks for that. Any other questions or comments about the revenue expense? You good?
Good.
Great. Uh, upcoming meeting day, so, guys, we're going to be getting into budget season.
Yeah.
So, um, uh, should have one more meeting in August. Um, what do you guys have, I know you're-
I'm good, except for the twenty-eighth. Eight fifteen or twenty-two?
I'm gone, eight to fifteen.
So, we can do the twenty-second?
Yeah.
Twenty-second? Okay.
Yes, any twenty-second.
Okay, let's schedule, uh, August twenty-second. Um, do you guys want to schedule September now, or do you want to hold off?
We can do September.
I'm more than happy to.
Uh, I am not available for the fifth.
Okay.
Or the nineteenth, I need the twelfth.
And the twenty-sixth. All right, let's tentatively, let's tentatively do twelve and twenty-six.
Okay.
We, um, take a look at your schedules, if you have issues, let me know. Again, we can always move it to a Wednesday, Thursday, whatever it is, depending on how your schedules line up.
Okay.
But let's, let's plan on, can you tend, can you put those upon the calendar for now? Uh, and then we'll post when the time comes.
Okay.
All right, um, oh, hold on one minute, I just want to make sure I've got anything on my agenda here.
You have a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, um, sorry, I forgot, I missed that last time. Did, you were going to have, Brian's going to do some pre-work and bag it, wait?
Yeah.
Are you doing it already?
No, they haven't.
I'm not done.
Good, I'll tell you what, you got the, I didn't even get the trees to land yet.
Yeah.
Got it.
Come, uh, reach out to him and see, see what, what it's going to cost, get back to us.
The one night down there, where like, tree ran, that's sitting pretty high. I don't know.
Put it in the river, like, throw it away.
No, we've done that with trees, no, you're right. I got a chance, I'm in. Do I not?
No, Michael. No, no.
I have a chance.
And I did.
And I'm willing to use it.
And we have an indoor service.
The big trees, it's got a couple of, the guy said, needs to be wired.
Which one? The, the one from the Georgians?
Really cool.
Right on the curb there, you go, right on the curb?
That, that's a, that's a monster.
It's really hard, it's really, you can't see, go ahead, I have to look at it. And there's, there needs to be, you said you got a wiring, living it up, there's risk of falling.
It's got to be-
And it's got, I don't know if you saw it, but you're down there.
Yeah, 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 no.
It was all dead, there's a couple of limbs that died this year.
I mean, the issue is, is that where the three massive trunks come together, it's basically starting to rot.
Eight, eight inches around, yeah.
I mean, each, each of the trunks is, is got to be in each of the rounds.
I'll look for the truck.
Yeah, it's massive, so, anyways, uh, other business, you guys have anything? I want to throw up there.
Just wanted to throw off the, uh, I have not had a chance to look at the monitoring reports that you just sent out Wednesday, yesterday?
Which ones?
Or the audio up at the bar?
No, I sent it, it's more, I sent it today after yours, um, I pulled down the, I pulled the data card and uploaded it from this last weekend and sent it out. I haven't looked, honestly, at within any of this stuff, which has been, been all for the, for the planning board here.
Okay.
Other comments, anybody else?
So we'll take a look, good look, maybe take a look at that in the dresser and see where we're staying the next meeting?
Uh, yeah, I think, you know, we'll, or, or in early September, after the summer season, you know, that's usually the-
Over half.
What's that?
Sidewalk looks great up there.
What's that?[1784.64]
The sidewalk.
Yeah, well, Bright Beach has done an awesome job, right?
Didn't change it too much, right?
Oh, yeah.
Forty-five hundred, yeah, ten-five.
Yeah, 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 it's, again, it's, they've done a really nice job, now, kind of, my guess is it'll hold up nicely, you know.
You said, well, when I was talking to Steve, the operator, he said, this will last longer than you will.
Yeah. That's.
That's a cheap shot.
Daniel, so, so.
I could have looked around with them.
Fake, crazy. So, you have anything else?
I'm good, thank you.
Um, all right, anybody? Thank you for coming out tonight, always appreciate it, having people in the audience, it's always a good thing. Motion to adjourn?
Second, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Yes, yes, checks are all signed, you know. Just don't say anything, you don't want it, not recorded. So, Mike?